For the regular meeting of independent school district six ninety five four. Lisa, roll call please.
Director Sauer.
Yes.
Director Rice. Here. Director Krady Simon.
Yes.
Director Lappi here. Director Raha.
Here.
Director Chisim.
Here. Thank you. Public comment. I haven't seen anybody. Mike, did you want to give your report? We'll go right there then. And. To. Mona and.
All right. Good evening, everybody. What I'm going to speak tonight about is the buses. So a few of us got together this summer, Mark, Mark, Bob, and Ryan, and just a little bit of a plan for our buses. And right now, we have a one-on-one bus and we're leasing seven. And what we're proposing to do is still own one, but our three new buses are coming in and looking at least eight. So bus one that we own currently is twenty fifteen and we have a number of issues with that, so we're looking at selling that. So replacing that with one of the new buses that are coming in. And then, and then the two other buses will replace two of the other ones that would have to go. And out of those two, there's a decent one that we could use to buy as our spare. Because I don't, you don't feel that leasing a bus as a spare, you know, it's not, you know, best, you know, best interest. So, so if we bought all bus two that we currently have, made that our bus nine, that would be our spare bus plus our extra trip bus that we needed in the spring time. Because some people are like, well, why do we need this extra bus? And come spring, we're running pretty regular with two cross-country or two track teams in softball and baseball, particularly, you can vote at any time. And then some of the buses go on. So what I'm proposing tonight is extending a lease, one-year lease on bus number six, buying bus number two, and then ordering two buses for next year, as we did last year. We, we put in order for three buses for two new leases this year. And we're going to have bus six and bus four are going to come up for the end of their lease next year. And so looking to order two replacements for those for next year. And instead of a three-year lease, looking at a three, four, or five-year lease. The four-year lease is kind of in our best interest as far as, you know, bringing down that payment a little bit. And then not giving them back right away, we can kind of prolong that by one more year with the payment plan that we're setting ahead. And if we need to extend it one more year, then it's only going to year five, which is plenty of life left in that, in that bus though. So gives us some options, right? Kind of the sweet spot is the four-year lease versus the three-year lease. So we look at those other buses as they come up, as their leases come up in the future too. So, so as we presented, we have letter B is for extending bus number six for a one-year lease. C is bus number two for a buyout. That's a twenty twenty bus with only forty-two thousand miles on it. And then D is proposal for ordering two replacement buses.
C was for which bus?
C is for the buyout for bus number two. And then that would put us flush with eight leased buses and owning one bus.
And Mike, I know we have this on our agenda for action, but being that you're up there, I guess I'll ask a question at this point. Most of these have a mileage limitation. Are we nearing, are we nearing any of those?
No, we're still, still under miles there.
Okay. And these are lease option buyouts?
Yes, yes. And this one, right now, we're at the cheapest buyout that we're going to be at for a number of years. You know, we want to get about seven, ten thousand dollars more. We want to make that for the modern buses.
And these are bunch of deniters?
Yes, mostly. Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
So what I have. So Mike, we're still on the rollout and replace program? That's what this is all about also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's going to, it would take a long time, you know, to get to the nine buses, buying one a year and going to live and have the lifespan of a nine-year bus. But there's, there's life in that, but then there's the set of tires, there's, the warranty's going to expire and those sorts of things. And that's where, when this was looked at before I even came, as far as starting more of a lease program, those are some of those pros and cons that you kind of factor in. And then again, now finding out, even with a couple of lease extensions, finding out that four years kind of are our sweet spot for right now to get the most paid for buck with the option to either buy it out or, or lease another one or two years, there'd still be some life left in that bus.
This letter B, is that only for one year for the bus?
Yes.
Was there an opportunity to extend that, or do we want to do that?
Well, we could, we could do it again, but that's where ordering the two buses, bus number four would be coming up. And that bus is good right now, but that's going to be coming up on, it's a twenty nineteen, so it'll be coming up on five, six years old.
Five years, okay.
Because it actually came in twenty eighteen, so it'll be six years old, maybe about that time too. Pass it down a little bit.
Anybody else, questions, Mike? Anything else for us, Mike?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. And Mona and Ryan, did you ask Mike?
Yeah, we could come up there.
My husband's over here, right?
Sure.
Okay, so basically, we, I gave everyone a paper of what it's going to look like for us in the future to continue check and connect. It shows on here like the numbers of what they're asking for, like our district to cover versus the St. Louis County, what we'll cover. And in order for our jobs to continue, they have to go, it has to be a two-year commitment. So that's, like, we're just kind of concerned about that happening and the concern for our students, you know, what that's going to look like for them, for us being there, and then us just going away.
I know especially for me, this is only a few months that I'm into the check and connect, and I've already taken on some kids. And in this program, it's a two-year commitment with these students. So even though I've only had a few months with these kids, if this program goes away, it's not going to be the full check and connect implementation that this program offers for the students. The deadline also needs to be, you guys have to discuss this, it needs to be in by November tenth. So you can see that on the paper. They have a funding, funding streams that you can look at, where you can pull funding if that's available. But they do need that two-year commitment, otherwise the program will end. So that's up to you guys to figure out that part of the funding for both Ramona and I.
So was this previous, did we have to fund that all market before, or was it all from this grant?
No, this is a.
It was all grant.
It's county, county funding. Three-year or two-year?
It was a three-year.
Three-year, right, yeah, this is the third year, so.
End at the end of this year.
Wait, two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, we would be responsible for thirty percent of the cost, is that correct?
Correct. And my math, that would be about, give or take, these are the county contributions, correct?
Yeah, that shows, I think, uh, I don't know.
It'd be about thirty, give or take thirty thousand of a cost to the district. And then twenty-five, twenty-six, before fifteen thousand.
I think we would be, so like, the fir-, the first year, the school would be responsible up to fourteen thousand at thirty percent. And then the next year would be up to thirty thousand for the, for our school district.
Per position.
Per position, so.
So double that if it's both positions, so, yeah, that's.
Okay.
No, that's just so I can clarify.
Can we just have two people in that position currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do the elementary K through six, and then Ramona's over at the high school, and I through twelve.
And right now, when we run data for our meetings and stuff, in the high school, we're at a thirty-four percent of kids failing three or more classes, and we work with them with their course performance, their attendance, and their behaviors. So us being there to help them with those classes being extra help, because they don't qualify for other services, it's, you know.
And how has that been going, I mean, has there been, I mean, is there like some data that shows the improvement or the steps?
It should show in, on those two pages of.
Oh, on this page, okay.
Like, if they're in the green, that means they're going up. They have to be within three, three in the green in order to exit out unless we feel otherwise. But there's the elementary Vaughn and the high schools on one.
The other big part about check and connect is the family engagement. So both of us have to reach out personal to the parents or guardians every month. We also hold events for families, and we provide that communication in between the teachers and the parents. Some parents have a hard time communicating to the teachers, where we both fill in that middle person, and we're able to communicate for the parent, or sometimes for that teacher.
Do we only have the seven through twelve with one, is that in the position?
Uh, Maddie Sanders was the physician last year for eight. Yep.
Which was new last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was new last year. So it was only seven through twelve unless Abby was doing all this with them.
No, she wasn't.
And then sometimes, like, if the counselor's not there, they have somebody, well, now they have North Holmes too, but sometimes if nobody's there, then we're there for them for extra support as well, so.
So you were in conjunction with North Holmes or separately from?
Separately from North Holmes. I do refer some students, if they're above and beyond, like, what I can do for them as far as, like, mental health and stuff, and I refer them out to North Holmes, and we both work with them for some time until they're comfortable and build that relationship, and then we exit them out to North Holmes.
So the seven through twelve is actually over capacity for students, so.
Yeah.
And the K through six right now is under capacity, you can find, can find help out if there's, like, you know, more students leaving seven through twelve, or do you guys kind of have to stay with your?
See, the biggest thing is, once we're in one building, it'll be much easier for me to go to the Vaughn to hear than the high school, it'll be a little bit.
Because she's going back and forth.
Back and forth between, or at least. Yeah, okay. I was just, because it looks like seven through twelve, and it, and it makes sense to me if there'd be more need. Because it's two grades, looking absolutely done.
And those numbers, child, you guys, sort of, something. Very, and they change too, as the year goes on, and some kids, I mean.
As they graduate out, and then.
Yeah, like, I'll have a couple of kids that graduate, some kids switch schools, and then I transfer them to those mentors at the other schools. Um, and I, I could take on more students, but right now, I'm, I don't know about taking on new students if they're not going to be here next, you know, if we're not going to be here next year, it's hard to build that relationship with those students and just up with them, or then just leave them.
Yep.
You know.
Our caseload, like, right now, I can have up to thirty students, but we're in this limbo of, do we continue to take on students if we're not going to have the program? You know, so that's kind of where we're at. But I, I know that we can have thirty students, we just can't take on any more than thirty until we have a, you know, confirmation of a program.
And they like us to keep at thirty, because, well, we meet with each student one hour a week.
Okay.
So that's what, we're supposed to meet with them at least one hour a week. We meet with them sometimes more than that, but in order to fit that one-on-one, one hour a week with them, we only have so many hours.
Hours, yeah.
And we do work, like, later in the day too, we can meet with them after school, before school, during lunch, or have home visits with the family in their homes to, to get those hours in, but.
How does the, how does referrals come to you guys? Does teachers do it?
Teachers, principal, um, you know, we can have referrals on behavior, attendance, and course performance. And then we have a focus on per student, we figure out what the issue is, and we focus on that one goal, to provide an intervention, and then to have the data to see how that intervention works. And then if we have to change that focus, we'll, which will change it, but we only work on one item at a time per student, depending on what they need.
So we pull data, the school, the school pulls the data each week, and then we pick, like, so many students to go over each week. And then we decide amongst the team whether or not we're going to, what services they're going to be.
So you're meeting weekly this year?
Yeah.
So in the past, we met every other week, and then as a group, about six of us, and then we would kind of say, okay, these kids are struggling with either attendance, behavior, or grades. And then some of the kids, we would recommend the check and connect. And then your capacity got filled pretty quick.
Yeah.
And then the other kids, if she got over pack capacity, then we'd find other interventions for the kids. So I think we put the neediest kids with check and connect. That met all three criteria, attendance, behavior, like, grades.
It sounds, it sounds great, because I feel like, you know, attendance and tarjents and things like that are going to be the things that affect the performance. And then, that's where they have kids in the seven through twelve, that's going to be the level which is dropping out.
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
So in the Vaughn level, especially with Title, it's more, and just more individualized help, like, more targeted to their specific needs.
Yes, um.
Rather than Title, I mean, they're probably in Title two ways, so.
Yeah, but, so Title one, um, if they're in specialized services, they're, they usually just stay on that path. But if, you know, they don't quite meet, meet that special, that's where the check and connect comes in, and I'm able to work with the, the kids. At the Vaughn, it's a lot more family engagement too, like, calling those families and making sure they're checking the folders with their kids, and they're being taken care of, they're showing up to events, they know what's going on in the school. I know a lot of parents, I've called them, and they don't really use the internet, so that phone call letting them know, hey, there's fall festivals at the school this whole week. They don't know about it, those types of things. For the little ones, it gets those families in. And then here at the school, at, with the middle school, it's kind of the same thing, but it's more building that organizational skills and school etiquette, right? That's a big thing, even manners, politeness, that's another huge thing that I know I bring to the table, because I'm big on politeness. And just being a good person, like, teaching these kids that you can be a good person. Yeah, it's hard when you have seven math assignments, but we don't need to freak out about it. Let's start at one and build from there.
And teaching them that independence of being able to, you know, set these goals, work at those goals that are achievable, and then work at, you know, being in the class and speaking to their teachers themselves, and working through, you know, to get through it, so.
Sounds good. Good program.
Those, those kids, they're getting farther behind.
They're getting. A chance.
A chance to catch up and.
Which it does go hand in hand with attendance, because once you're behind, you don't want to come back.
Well, especially after all the COVID and everything, you know, we seem to have lost so many, you know what I mean? You move the country, and it's like, oh my goodness. But I say whatever help we can give these kids in any way we can, I.
Well, it's nice that it catches the gap.
Yeah.
Feels like a gap, because they don't qualify for services.
And that's why you've, we've always struggled, I think. That's the kids lose, follow through the cracks.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the things that we hope.
And it takes time to work with them, because like, the three Fs is really overwhelming, sometimes it's more than three Fs, it's really overwhelming. So it's like, just focus on the one right now. Which one are you closest to getting to passing, let's focus on that this week and then we'll.
And you guys work with the teachers too, and.
And that's the thing, explaining to the teacher, we did this one worksheet instead of all five, we're, we're going through these at the pace, explaining to the teacher how long it took the student to do the assignment, if they understood what they were doing, even though it took them an hour, they did everything right, like, those types of things to communicate.
And then you kind of go between, between a student and a teacher too, which is a helpful thing, I believe.
For the teachers, yes. As long as we're communicating, they really appreciate communication.
Yeah.
And I'm, I try to communicate every day with them.
Yeah.
You know, even if it's a hello, we don't need an update, but if there's an update, we sit down, figure out a plan, and as long as we all stick with the plan, that's the other key point, you know?
Oh, we definitely appreciate you guys' passion for it.
Okay. Any other questions?
So this has to be done by the term, we don't have a board meeting until after.
No, so.
I'm not so sure that's a hard thing, Mike. I can inquire.
Okay.
You could always call. It's a work special, maybe.
Especially maybe if you're going to. Because it's, there was a couple of things, you know, how long, or perhaps two or more years, so you could do two years.
And I think that would give the board a little more time to digest some of the figures and possibly come up with a review and ask some questions.
Is there any, to, to see if, if we have any, I mean, like, ideas, ideas for finding where we could get, where we could get that from? Even. Well, and that's that list down there too, shows like, sort of, where you could possibly go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Good business.
Thanks, Eric.
Item number four, approving of the agenda.
Make the motion.
Motion by Director Sauer. Support by Director Raha. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, approval of the consent agenda. These include the minutes of the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting.
Okay.
Director Lappi.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We already went through reports, so, Mike, I thank you for that. Item seven, personnel, motion to accept the leave of absence for Joel McDonald, run two boys basketball coach, effective October ninth.
Okay.
Apart.
Motion by Director Krady Simon. Support by Director Raha. And this is, would be indefinite? Is that correct, Mike?
One year.
It's a one year.
One year. In the letter.
Yep, for a year and a half.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, administrative business. Item A, motion to approve the shared service agreement for an early childhood coordinator between Mountain Iron and Beale School District, ISD number seven twelve and Chisholm School District, ISD six ninety-five for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five school year, years.
Okay.
So far.
Motion by Director Krady Simon, support by Director Lappi.
This is just a renewal.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five, let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve an additional one-year lease agreement with Holden Bus Company Incorporated for bus number six as presented.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Director Krady Simon, support by Director Rice. I just do have one question, Mike. When we have issues, being that they are out of Monticello?
Yep.
Have we had any real delays?
Uh, not too much. We, they do have a mobile mechanic that comes up and works on things, and if they can't get here in time, we have a local vendor we use over in Virginia, so.
Will that negate the lease?
Nope, because we still, there are still certain wear items that we have to maintain. Okay, we turn that bus back to them in working order, so some is covered under warranty, just like your vehicle, and some things you, you do have to, you know, pay for, they were all pre-mature, so. If that happens.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, motion to approve the lease agreement with Holden Bus Company Incorporated for the purchase of bus number two as presented.
Right.
Motion by Director Lappi.
Support. Support.
Support by Director Krady Simon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I forgot to ask for discussion, but then. Item D, motion to approve the new four-year lease agreement for two two thousand twenty-five buses as presented. A motion approval. Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Krady Simon. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine on your agenda, a little discussion. Uh, one thing. The superintendent's administrative assistant is on the ball already for the MSBA annual conference, January eleventh. She would like to know if anybody's interested, so we don't get stuck in the dregs.
No, what?
The earth hotels. So.
We don't want to be in the one we were at. Yeah, because we were at the millennial institute.
I am interested.
I'm in.
What's the days of the week for that?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
January eleventh is.
Wednesday, evening.
I guess, yeah, that's early for me, Thursday, Friday, you come home Friday.
Okay.
So what is the dates again, is it the six, uh, sixteen, is that what?
Eleven.
Oh, eleven. There we go.
I'm not, I'm interested too, I don't know what's.
So.
So you're going to go, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Uh, it all depends on if there's a skating competition.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a hard baby. But we don't.
You can put my knee down for that also.
It looks like Cindy and Shelley have some requests.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's a no. Okay, there's a skating competition in my title that we do. I don't know about my hockey schedule.
This is a short drive from the Twin Cities.
Yeah.
Soon as I know, I can give you my.
No.
Hardly. Are you going to?
They always have to have it during skating season, you know?
Yeah. Are you going this year?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else with any items to discuss?
I don't have a lot, I think. Years ago. The baby facilities.
Yeah. I guess I'll go to item ten, information, the collaborative board, we met today, myself, Director Raha, Director Sauer, the superintendent. And we will have some issues or items to present at the next board meeting.
Not issues.
Not issues.
Just a no. You used the wrong word.
I did.
That sounded terrible.
Like, I don't know.
The number of meetings. Issues indicate difficulty. No, no, no.
The difficulty was that this school credit card didn't work.
Yeah.
Well, the unions were so nice to us, it's, I just pay us later. They were, they're very good.
They know where you work.
So, some of the things that we discussed in Director Sauer and Director Raha, please correct me, I am wrong. We, we talked about a pathways coordinator between the two districts, also a. Uh, joint powers agreement, so we'll probably have that before you at this next meeting.
And the joint powers is just to continue the collaboration on a quarterly basis? Because if we're collaborating, the committee thought it should be something that we continue doing in meeting, just to make sure everything's running smoothly.
And I, I strongly suggest for the three that weren't there, that Lisa and Mark have some information, they draft copies, and get those to the three of you, so you can peruse them for the next meeting and generate questions, so.
I'm sure you can try and power the meeting.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Tells me what it says.
All I can say is, this is, you know, I said it before, I've been through a hundred of these, and this is so positive. And there's so much cooperation, and I think that we're really making headway here. And, and again, it was brought up today, why are we here? What are we doing this for? We're not, we're not doing it for, you know, for citizens, yes, but for kids. What can we get them in education? If we don't have it, who does? Let's find it, and let's get them in there, and do that type of stuff. That's what this is all about. And I really, I think, this is exciting stuff for me, I like it.
The, and I'll try to get some information within the next day or two to everybody, so you have all the information at hand. And then, like, like Director Casey said, or Chair Casey said, if you have questions, call. Any of us that were there, so.
And in fact, the, the chair of the evening. Uh, in fact, the, the Chair of the Hibbing Board, uh, had mentioned a specific, specific citizen over in Hibbing was one hundred percent against working with Chisholm on anything. And has now changed their tune a little bit.
Like a board member or just that?
No. Or you, John or Jane Q Public.
Uh, gotcha.
I guess I, I don't wanna be labeling gender. So, but, uh, yeah, it, it's been, it's been positive, good questions being asked. You know, it's, the thing is that we're not rubber stamping everything. We are asking some of the tough questions and, and those will be presented to us at the next meeting. I don't have anything other in regard to the collaborative board meeting. You see that we do have enrollment numbers in front of you? And a couple of decreases, not significant, uh, a student here, a student there. The reasoning, we don't know. Whether it's family moving out of the area, or some of them may be turning of age, or they don't want to be in school anymore. And I think every school district probably deals with that issue at some point. But we're, we're holding, we're holding steady. Anybody else? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Motion by Director Rana Soder, support. Support by Director Raha. Any discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, time is five thirty two.